I call to order the April 24, 2023 special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to our second meeting in the West Committee Room. A reminder to everyone that the room has room-wide microphones. They allow any speaker to be heard both in the room and on the live stream. As such, please take care with side conversations. The Zoom audio feed will pick up all audio from the room. I would like to note that Regent Tad Johnson is attending via Zoom. Good afternoon, Regent Tad Johnson. The first item on the agenda is the real estate transaction. This is the lease of 176 North Mississippi River Boulevard, familiarly known to us as East Cliff. This is on the agenda for review and action. Senior Vice President Franz, will you walk us through the proposed lease?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and thank you. My name is Myron Franz, Senior Vice President for Finance and Operations. Good afternoon to all members. I'm happy to be here today and talk with you about a proposal that would lease the university property located at 176 North Mississippi River Boulevard in St. Paul, known as East Cliff, to the state of Minnesota for use as a temporary residence for the governor and the First Lady who wants the property to vacate by President Gabel. As you know, the property, known as East Cliff, has been an integral part of the university community for over six decades. East Cliff was donated to the university in 1958 by the Brooks family and has served as a residence for eight University of Minnesota presidents since 1961. In President Gabel's departure and the state of Minnesota's need for temporary housing for Governor Walz, the First Lady, and their family, we have an opportunity to put this publicly owned asset to good use during a time of transition. As far as I can tell, from the records and our collective memories, this will be the first time that we will have a governor and First Lady in residence at East Cliff. By leasing East Cliff to the state of Minnesota, we can ensure that this historic property continues to serve a public purpose and supports the university's mission of community engagement and outreach. The key terms of the lease are: the rental period of about 15 months; unless the parties mutually agree to different dates, the lease for the premises is anticipated to be July 1, 2023, or as soon as practical thereafter; and continue through September 30, 2024, with three one-month options for renewal available to the state. Rent will be $4,400 per month based on recovering the cost to the University of the East Cliff house, with the state responsible for direct costs of utilities, snow removal, lawn care, cable, telephone, custodial, and security systems. The rent will be used by university facilities management to cover estimated minimal maintenance and reduced operating costs associated with the use of the property by the state for this 15-month period. No capital costs are associated with the rent. The U is partnering with the state in order for the U to recover its costs and also to support the opportunity for the state to save money in the residence or the temporary residence for the governor and First Lady. I recommend approval of this agreement to lease East Cliff to the state of Minnesota as a temporary residence for the governor and First Lady. This is an opportunity to serve the public interest, support the university's mission, and foster positive relationships with our state partners. I want to give special thanks to the entire board, of whom I've spoken with all of you in the last several days, and that you've provided me with your views and issues regarding this proposed lease. Thank you for that, for those conversations. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have about this proposed lease. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we turn to discussion, is there a motion to approve the proposed lease of East Cliff?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Regent Cagnagna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Senior Vice President. I think it's an excellent idea. I mean, it allows us to obviously recoup some operating costs as well as put a public asset to public use and continue to serve the state in that way. Two quick questions. I know there's an East Cliff Advisory Committee. I'm not sure of the membership of it. Again, this thing developed quickly, so I understand if they weren't able to opine on this, but I'm curious if they were. And then my second one, are we confident in our ability to fulfill that July 1 start date, considering East Cliff has a current tenant?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Regent Cagnagna. So yes, in terms of the target date of July 1, we feel confident that will work. You know, we have both move out and move in issues, both in terms of the governor, the state getting ready for the governor's residence, and also for leaving. So we think that'll work, but there's still a few loose ends to tie up to get that finalized. But I think the other thing that we're really optimistic about is that this use really provides us with an opportunity to keep oversight of this property ongoing. We did a check with the East Cliff Advisory Board. Regent Davenport and I have called. There's a few people we haven't called yet, but we really wanted to make sure that people were aware of this, understood the concerns, both in the Donar community and in the Brooks family community. So we exercised great caution and diligence. Thank you, Regent Davenport, to make sure that everyone knew about this, that we could talk to. Thank you. I look forward to supporting the motion.
Anything you want to add, Regent Davenport, or did Vice President Franz cover it?
I think he covered it, and I would just say supportive comments.
Okay. Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Chairman Mayron. Senior Vice President Franz, I've got a question and then a little commentary. The question is, understanding how the potential extensions, so the three-month options, are those options for the state to exercise? How does that fit with our side of the equation, just thinking out as to other potential transitions?
Madam Chair. Well, that was designed in part because, as you know, the reason for the governor's availability as a tenant is the construction and renovation of the governor's residence. And so we just built that in for the caution that could be there if, in fact, it doesn't get done on time. So this is just one of those safety valves. I mean, we'll know leading up to that time in September, but we wanted to have that there just in case.
Yes.
Well, yeah, because I was thinking about that point and wondering if, you know, we will have a lot of interesting conversations about the building and with the oversight group, because there's been some conversation about East Cliff going on now for, you know, a number of months, years, actually. But, you know, I was wondering whether it made more sense to just go with a longer contract that we could then break or waive at some point as opposed to be sitting there where we can't really answer the question of when we're actually going to take it back for, you know, hopefully a permanent president by then. But, you know, I guess you'll have to navigate that when the time comes. Just a couple of comments about this opportunity. As I explained to Senior Vice President Franz in a call, I had actually received a call a few weeks ago from retired State Senator Jen Olson, and she had said, "I don't understand why, you know, the university doesn't set this up with the governor," I guess a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, my understanding was that the agreement was already in place. And so it was a wonderful, wonderful surprise to hear that this was an opportunity for the university. I think it's, you know, it's a win-win. And I think that East Cliff is such an amazing resource. It's such a great asset. And I know, having had a chance to see it under different presidents, and I don't think that, you know, some members of the board now have had a chance to kind of see it in that context with the sit-down. You know, I think certainly coming out of COVID, that had some impact on our use of it, but the relationship-building opportunities that come from the dinners that the university president has had throughout history, it's really remarkable. And we can have events at McNamara, we can have them in other places, but when people are invited to dine with the president and the president's family at East Cliff, it's a lifelong memory. And so it's something that I really hope we'll be able to put back into the toolbox for the university, especially at a time when relations, you know, public relations are critical. I think having the governor stay there for a period of time just adds to the mystique of this amazing facility, to be able to reference the fact that this served as the governor's residence for a period, I think, is a really neat thing. So, you know, I send this off with full support on a great opportunity for the state to have two very important institutions come together, the governorship and the university, and, you know, with the hope that when we come out of this, that we have full commitment to seeking, to use that resource for the new president and time going forward for the university. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions by my colleagues? All right. Thank you very much. There being no further discussion, appears everybody's ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Thank you very much. Senior Vice President Franz, you get to make a really great call to the governor.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members. It's very pleasing. I appreciate it.
All right. The second item on the agenda is I want to provide an update on the process to select an interim president. And that is as follows. Based on our discussion, an interim president position description and application instructions were finalized over the weekend, and a website went live earlier today. The university is now accepting applications at interim-prez-search.umn.edu. And we encourage anyone who's listening to share this information with anyone you think would be a strong candidate. And let me just say, if you didn't write that down, if you just go to the University of Minnesota Regents' website, you will see immediately, as my memory, because I did it a little bit earlier, a link that takes you right to the interim search. So the easiest way is just go to the Regents' website. In alignment with the board's desire for an accelerated process, the posting will remain open until Monday at noon. So this is this coming Monday, a week from today, at 12:00 noon. After that time, applications will be compiled and shared with Regents for review. We have held time on your calendars for a special board meeting this Friday morning to discuss applicants in a de-identified way and to select finalists to be interviewed. And as you know, our General Counsel's office will provide guidance on how to discuss candidates during that meeting. That meeting will not take place at the special board meeting currently scheduled for April 28. It will occur after the close of the application process, which is going to close next Monday. So we will be, Rachel will be circulating calendars very shortly to you all to hopefully find a common date next week for us all to come together to discuss the, review the applications and to discuss the applicants in a de-identified way so that we can select finalists to be interviewed. Assuming we are agreed to the finalists next week, I anticipating them, I'm sorry, anticipate inviting them for interviews with the full board during a week after that, which I think would be the week of May 8. So what this means is if our, originally we're talking about having this all, our interim president selected by May 5, because we are now allowing applications to come in until next Monday, a week from today, until noon, it does mean that we will be, hopefully, selecting our president during the following week by no later than May 12. That's the goal here. Finally, I want to acknowledge that the board continues to receive a wide variety of public comments on the topic. All comments are being compiled and shared with the board for our consideration. I want to reiterate that we are highly appreciative of each person who took the time to share their ideas and perspectives with us. I do know that when comments come into the board, the board office is sending out information to the, so if someone writes to the board and says, "I think you ought to consider candidate ABC," there is a communication that is going out from the board office that now will tell them how to get in contact with the link on the website to submit applications. But if you receive phone calls from people, and I know I have, or emails saying, "Have you thought of this person? Have you thought of that person?" What I've been doing, and I assume you will do the same, is provide them with the same link so that they can go and submit that information vis-à-vis the applicant process. So that's how I've kept up with people saying, "Here's a process, and I hope your applicant or your suggestion applies." All right. Any questions about the process or our next steps as a board as it relates to the interim selection process? Yes, Regent Farnsworth.
Thanks, Chairman Mayron. I may have just missed this, but are we still using the Friday board meeting for something else, or is that off the table now?
I don't want to take it off the table yet, because I want to see how today's meeting goes, and I don't know if there's going to be any spillover where we couldn't complete things. So we'll make a decision as a group at the end of today's meeting whether we need the April 28 date or not. Yes, Regent for Haley.
So, Chairman Mayron, that feels like a comment of, "Let's use our time efficiently and effectively today," so.
That would be good.
Or staff can get a couple hours off on Friday morning.
No problem.
That would be good. Yep. All right. The next item on the agenda is the vice chair election. This is also for review and action. As noted in the docket materials, Article 3, Section E of the bylaws, requires that notices sent to each member of the board 10 days prior to the date of the meeting at which an election to fill a vacancy in an office of the board will be conducted. If the board agrees on the need to fill this vacancy now, we must suspend the 10-day notification provision of the bylaws. A vote to suspend any portion of the bylaws requires 2/3 of the entire board voting in favor of the motion. If the motion succeeds, we will then move to the election of a vice chair, using the same process we did in December. If the motion fails, the election would be held at either a special meeting with notice provided 10 days in advance, or the next regular meeting of the board, which is in May. Is there anyone willing to move the motion as stated in the docket materials? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Then the motion is as follows, as set out in the materials. Be it resolved that the Board of Regents hereby suspends pursuant to Article 10 of the bylaws the 10 calendar days notification requirement of Article 3, Section E of the bylaws. And we do have that second. This motion is not debatable, but if there are any questions on the process, I would be happy to provide an opportunity for my colleagues to ask them now. Any questions? Not debating, but questions. Yes, Regent Rocha.
Has there been a notice sent to start the 10-day process, or?
No.
Okay.
No, there has not. Any other questions on process? All right. There being no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, point of order. I think if you have to have a supermajority, it would have to be by roll call. Madam Chair, the bylaws do not require a roll call on it, but it's certainly the prerogative of members to ask. I don't know how you determine 2/3 versus whatever.
I think I can listen and hear, and if I have a question as to whether it's 2/3s. But if anybody wants a roll call, I'm happy to do a roll call on this. Anybody requesting a roll call vote? All right. Then we'll do this again. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
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 I'm sorry. So let's do a roll call, so I make sure that I am doing this accurately. Executive Director Steve?
I thought you said your ears were good.
I thought they were, but no, I heard too many. At least three.
On the motion to suspend the bylaws, Regent Davenport.
Aye.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth?
No.
Regent Farnsworth votes no. Regent Hips?
Yes.
Regent Hips votes yes. Regent Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Ruth Johnson votes yes. Regent Tad Johnson?
No.
Regent Tad Johnson votes no. Regent Cagnagna?
No.
Regent Cagnagna votes no. Regent Powell?
Yes.
Regent Powell votes yes. Regent Rocha?
No.
Regent Rocha votes no. Regent Swigum?
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Regent Tayurabe?
No.
Regent Tayurabe votes no. Regent for Haley?
Yes.
Regent for Haley votes yes. Chairman Mayron?
Yes.
Chairman Mayron votes yes.
All right. The vote was seven in favor, five against. The motion did not carry, so we will not take up the issue today of the vice chair. We will then notice it for another special meeting 10 days out, or it will be held at the next meeting, which will be our May meeting. All right. Moving on to the next item.
Can we take a short recess? I'd like to consult with OBR staff briefly.
All right.
Five minutes.
Pardon?
Five minutes.
We will take a short recess.
Thank you.
All right.
Didn't know that was an option. All these years.
All right. We've had a short recess. Regent for Haley, is there a motion you want to make?
There is. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move that this board, under Article 10 of our bylaws, that this board suspend the bylaws from now until June 30, 2023. Excuse me. Move to suspend the bylaws and create the position of co-vice chair from a period of today through June 30, 2023. And I'd be happy to explain my reasoning if there's a second for that motion. Co-vice chair from now to June 30.
Do I have the latitude to let her explain it before we seek a second? Under Roberts? Yes, go ahead. Why don't you explain the rationale, given I don't think anyone was aware of this?
No.
Anyone may know if they want to second it or not.
Madam Chair, to my knowledge, we have two individuals who are both very strong candidates for this position. And this is a limited period of time where these two candidates can work with you, Madam Chair, on leadership for this board, which currently we only have you as leadership for this board. And having additional support in that leadership role, I think, is really important. This is for a very limited period of time. This would be through June 30 of this year. We can then vote for a permanent replacement after that. But it will give not only you, Madam Chair, an opportunity to have colleagues in leadership, but also this board the opportunity to have full leadership at this period of time when we have an outgoing president and an incoming interim.
Thank you for the explanation. Is there a second to the motion?
Can I ask you clarification? Is that allowed?
Sure.
This motion cannot be discussed either?
Well, Madam Chair, to suspend, the motion to suspend bylaws is a non-debatable motion. There can be questions for clarification.
Can we move to debate?
Is it, can we, you know, it seems to me if people want to debate in this motion, is there a way that we can move to suspend Roberts' rules of order as to this, so to allow a debate on it and discussion? I'm getting an affirmative from our man of the rules. The answer is yes. Do we need a motion to do that, or can I, in all of my wisdom and power, which is limited, order that we can debate on this?
Madam Chair, it's certainly up to the chair how you want to progress through the meeting, and if your colleagues are willing to allow that.
Put up with me? All right.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, it's the ruling of the chair, and if nobody appeals the ruling of the chair, then it happens.
All right. Well, what I'd like to do is get a second. If there's no second, I don't think we need to go any farther. I'd like to, I'm hoping there's a second to the motion, and then I will allow debate on the motion to bet it more completely.
Second.
All right. So, Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Chairman Mayron. A question, Regent for Haley. And it's your motion, this is the interparliamentarian, former parliamentarian coming out, is your motion to suspend the bylaws, and I want to make sure I heard your language precisely, a portion of it, I just heard suspend the bylaws generally?
Suspend the bylaws as it relates to the position of vice chair.
Just one section of it or?
Yes, Article 3.
Whatever it is. Okay.
Just as to that section. Yes, Regent Rocha?
And so my understanding then would be that the position of vice chair is created through the bylaws. Is that accurate? So this is suspending that to create. My technical question is, in the unlikely absence of the chair, which of the vice chairs is vice chairer? Which one would be, would have, you know, which, how do we determine which vice chair would have precedence to step into the chair role if that's necessary?
So, under the bylaws, it is automatically the vice chair. And so if we are suspending to suspend vice chair and make it co-vice chair for a period of time, then it could be co-chairs, unless this board wanted to resuspend the rules and appoint, resuspend the bylaws. And instead, state one is the chair and one remains vice chair.
I just think, we could have two gavels here, I suppose, sometime, if that'd be necessary. Let's make a decision. That's what we're elected to do. We're elected to make a decision. Not a decision.
Regent Kinyanya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speaking to the motion and not candidacy, of which I'm one of the two self-identified candidates, and I'm glad I can speak to it, because that kind of caught me by surprise in the prior one. In my email to you all earlier, you know, I'd stated that I preferred to wait, and that was just, you know, the 10 days there for a reason. Obviously, it's a truncated period, but then also, with an impending election, which seems to not confirm, but seems to, you know, possibly be happening, that was the preference. But I was prepared to obviously speak to candidacy either way. What I'm hearing, though, you know, which might explain Regent for Haaland's really trying to make this work, is, is the support that's needed in, you know, in the interim. I think, you know, you kind of spoke to it just now, right? At now, rather than any other time, so. And that's why I would appreciate discussing that other motion, because that's the other side of it, that it's already a short period, and there's a lot of work to be done in this of any period. So, I, I mean, I guess, I'm prepared to move forward however this, you know, this board decides whether that's Regent for Haaland's proposal, or if, again, if the original motion to suspend the bylaws had passed, I would have been happy to move forward with that and see the outcome, right? But, you know, I am in support of finding whatever's an appropriate resolution. But the, I guess, my reaction to the first motion was not candidacy-based, it was, it was on what I had alluded to, to the email. So, I'm amenable to what this board decides.
Any further discussion? Am I correct that this motion needs to pass also by a two-thirds vote, because it is a motion to suspend the bylaws?
That's right.
All right. Then, do you want to, can you state the motion?
Yes.
All right, please.
On, on the motion to suspend?
Is someone trying to speak?
On the motion to suspend the bylaws and create the position of co-vice chairs through June 30th of 2023. That's, as I understand it.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote, and if you will call the roll.
All right. Regent Davenport?
No.
Regent Davenport votes no. Regent Farnsworth?
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Hipsh?
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Ruth Johnson votes yes. Regent Tad Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Tad Johnson votes yes. Regent Kinyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kinyanya votes yes. Regent Powell?
Yes.
Regent Powell votes yes. Regent Rocha?
No.
Regent Rocha votes no. Regent Swigum?
No.
Regent Swigum votes no. Regent Tayurabe?
Yes.
Regent Tayurabe votes yes. Regent for Haaland?
Yes.
Regent for Haaland votes yes.
The motion carries nine to three, so we now have the opportunity to have, to proceed with nominations for the co-vice chair position. Yes, Regent for Haaland?
Regent Mayron, I would be pleased to nominate Regents Kinyanya and Hipsh for the positions, positions of co-vice chair of this board for the interim period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Wait, are there further nominations? Hearing none? Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Regent for Haaland?
I would like to know if either Regent Kinyanya or Regent Hipsh would like to at least say a few words and confirm that they are still willing to accept such a nomination at this point in time.
Regent Hipsh, you want to go first?
Sure. Chair Mayron, and to Regent Cody for Haaland, yes, I'd be honored to serve as vice chair. My, I'll work hard, I promise that, and I love Minnesota, I love the University of Minnesota, I'll do whatever I can to help it along, I'll try to be a good listener with all you. Takes 12 of us to really make good policy happen, and all 12, and so I'd happily do it. So, thank you. And thanks for the nomination.
Regent Kinyanya?
Thanks, Madam Chair, Regent for Haaland. I think I love the university more. I'm kidding. You've been loving it for a lot longer.
That's true. Length of service times love, I've got you.
Regent Kinyanya, do you know the rule of holes?
Huh?
The rule of holes?
Yeah, but I'll let you say it.
When you're in, one to quit digging.
I will take note of that. No, but, I mean, obviously, being willing to serve is all about supporting the board, and, you know, I think I'm willing, as, as Regent Hipsh is, as, as well as the pivot, right? Because I think something Regent Swigum pointed is, it's not just in the absence of the chair, it's supporting while the chair is there, and that's kind of what we've seen in this dialogue, that that's needed more now than ever. So, however, we're able to support for the interim, and, and of course thereafter, you and I had a conversation the other week about, about committees and just roles on the board, and I think our conclusion was, you know, whatever happens, wherever we end up, we're going to be able to serve. And I don't think we imagined this one, but, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be happy to serve as well.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Regent Rocha?
Thank you. Would the candidates yield to a question?
Yes, will you each yield to a question from your colleague?
Maybe the last time.
Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you. I, you know, I was, you know, anticipating quite some time ago that, that my successor would be in this position to, to make a decision both for the, the, I guess, interim vice chair leading up to the next election for a two-year term. So, to some extent, I'm asking the question on behalf of someone who I don't yet know who it will be. So, I, you know, for me, it's very important that, that the seat that I hold has a seat at the table. And so, one is, what is your commitment to keeping your colleagues informed in the process of decision-making, not just in terms of the result? Returning phone calls, initiating phone calls. And then the second, the second question is a broader one, which is, there's a great deal of debate continuing across the country, but at this institution in particular, about the role of a board. And, you know, you're probably quite familiar with my sense that this is an important board to be a constructive skeptic and exert oversight in the process of governing the university, and that other, other entities that surround it oftentimes get very involved, and at times can almost become a surrogate. What is your perspective on the role of this board in, in the position as vice chair and co-vice chairs and potentially co-chairs?
Before you answer, let me just say that I think, with all due respect to the questions you're asking, and I think they're very important questions, I think this is a board decision to ultimately to wrestle with what is the role of the board, what is the role of colleagues vis-à-vis each other. I think, asking these two individuals at this time to commit to what they might do without having the opportunity to discuss this issue on a larger basis, as to how we all see our respective roles vis-à-vis each other and the community at large, I think is an inappropriate question to ask at this time. And I am going to call the question at this time. So, all those in? Yes.
What is the question?
The question is, the motion before us is, we have nominations for two individuals, we have no other nominations. My understanding is, this is a majority vote. So, at this time, I am going to call the question, and we will take the vote at this time.
Madam Chair, I appeal the ruling of the chair. That, that was remarkable.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Rocha.
Yeah, and I, I find it stunning, the heavy gavel. I, I believe I have a right, if they want to give me a short answer, they can give me a short answer. I'm trying to decide whether I want to vote yes or no on the motion in front of us.
Understand.
And so, you, you. Good luck, all of you.
Well, let me put it to my fellow Regent Rocha and Regent, I'm sorry, Regent Kinyanya and Regent Hipsh, if you wish to answer the question individually with your own personal opinion in response to Regent Rocha, so he can make a decision, feel free. If you choose not to, as I've said, I've stated, I think this is a board decision about how we conduct ourselves after we have an opportunity, but I certainly don't want to deprive Regent Rocha of whatever information he needs to make a decision on this vote. So, I'll start with Regent Hipsh.
Sure, I'll, I'll give it a shot. I mean, so, I don't have any silver bullet that, that's going to fix everything that's wrong here. You know, not saying that there's a lot wrong, but I don't have any silver bullet, okay? I'm a good communicator, I've chaired a lot of boards, I've been vice chair of a lot of boards, and I think I'm a good communicator, and I think, you know, I try to reach out to all the board members and get their input, get their ideas, because we each represent about 8% of the population of Minnesota, just over. And so, so we all bring our past, our skills, our ideas, and that's how we make decisions in a governance way. And right now, we have a few things that are ahead of us, picking a new president is number one, and picking an interim president is number one, and picking a permanent president is number two. I can't think of anything more crucial to the board in the next, whatever we're on, until June 30th, somebody else's chats to do it, so. But, you know, my word, I'll work hard.
Regent Kinyanya?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think in, in speaking with most of my colleagues, including you, in the past week or so, one, one thing I said is, I think, the more we can focus on governance when we're here, and less on our own internal issues, this is an ironic time to say that, I, I think we'll be better off and be able to serve the community better. So, that, that's a role that I see leadership playing, and being able to, to, as you were alluding to, you know, make sure we, we have the information we need and, and are informed, so that we're not having some of those discussions here, when we should be discussing mission and, and some of the important priorities in front of us. So, and I think, I think we're all aware of some of the ways we differ in how we look at governance, and, you know, it's appropriate at a board. But, you know, I've, I've been pretty, you know, open and hopefully consistent with my desire to see a little more board involvement. And I think we've seen some of that, actually, in the most, very recently, you know. So, I would look forward to contributing to that as well, so that when we get to McNamara, you know, we're talking about the colleges and, and extension and, and the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Regent Rocha?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I think Regent Farnsworth.
Oh, Regent Farnsworth, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Chair Mayron. I just originally raised my hand to speak to the motion. I think, you know, originally why I had opposed the last one was just due to wanting to hopefully give a little bit more time for the election process to play out, and see where we get to, well, you know, maybe unexpected. I think this is a creative solution, you know, that Regent for Haaland has come up with, and we're doing a lot of things kind of in uncharted territory at the moment. And so, if this, you know, will, for all the reasons that have been previously discussed, provide support to the leadership team, provide support to the entire board, and then get us through to when, hopefully, nothing's ever guaranteed with this process, but where, I would hope that it's likely in July that we're settled with our board, or whenever our annual meeting is, when we're settled with our board composition, then that'll absolutely be an appropriate time to have other, you know, the full new composition weigh in on leadership, which I think is appropriate and needed. And so, yeah, I'm supportive of this, and my, it's, it's, it's an unconventional, but a good solution, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I think Regent Farnsworth.
Oh, Regent Farnsworth, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Chair Mayron. I just originally raised my hand to speak to the motion. I think, you know, originally why I had opposed the last one was just due to wanting to hopefully give a little bit more time for the election process to play out, and see where we get to, well, you know, maybe unexpected. I think this is a creative solution, you know, that Regent for Haaland has come up with, and we're doing a lot of things kind of in uncharted territory at the moment. And so, if this, you know, will, for all the reasons that have been previously discussed, provide support to the leadership team, provide support to the entire board, and then get us through to when, hopefully, nothing's ever guaranteed with this process, but where, I would hope that it's likely in July that we're settled with our board, or whenever our annual meeting is, when we're settled with our board composition, then that'll absolutely be an appropriate time to have other, you know, the full new composition weigh in on leadership, which I think is appropriate and needed. And so, yeah, I'm supportive of this, and my, it's, it's, it's an unconventional, but a good solution, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. We now have two vice chairs. Very appreciative of your creative solution, Regent for Haaland.
I'm more appreciative of their willingness to take on this job.
All right. Let's move on now to the presidential transition expectations. This, too, is a review and action item. In this section, we will discuss the transition issues related to President Gabel's departure and to set expectations for the remainder of her tenure. At the request of board leadership, President Gabel provided a memo that outlined a variety of open issues and projects in her office and across the university administration. Regent Powell and I then met with President Gabel to
I think in, in speaking with most of my colleagues, including you, um, in the past week or so, um, one, one thing I said is, I think, the more we can focus on governance when we're here and less on our own internal issues, this is an ironic time to say that, um, I, I think we'll be better off and be able to serve the community better, so that, that's a role that I see leadership playing and being able to, to, um, I, as you were alluding to, you know, make sure we, we have the information we need and, and are informed so that we're not having some of those discussions here when we should be discussing mission and, and some of the important priorities, um, in front of us. So, and I think, I think we're all aware of some of the ways we differ in how we look at governance and, you know, it's appropriate at a board, um, but, you know, I've, I've been pretty, you know, open and hopefully consistent with, um, my desire to see a little more board involvement. Um, and I think we've, we've seen some of that, uh, actually in the most, uh, very recently, you know? So, um, I would look forward to contributing to that as well, so that when we get to McNamara, um, you know, we're talking about the colleges and, and extension and, and the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Regent Rocha?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I think Regent Farnsworth.
Oh, Regent Farnsworth, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Chair Mayron, and I just originally raised my hand to speak to the motion. I think, you know, um, originally why I had opposed the last one was just due to wanting to hopefully give a little bit more time for the election process to play out and see where we get to, um, well, you know, maybe unexpected. I think, um, this was a creative solution, you know, that Regent for Halen has come up with, um, and we're doing a lot of things kind of in uncharted territory, um, at the moment. And so, if this, you know, will, for all the reasons that have been previously discussed, provide support to the leadership team, um, provide support to the entire board, um, and then get us through to when, um, hopefully, nothing's ever guaranteed with this process, but where I would hope that it's likely in July that we're settled, um, with our board, or whenever our annual meeting is, um, when we're settled with our board composition, then, um, that'll absolutely be an appropriate time to have other, you know, the full new composition weigh in, um, on leadership, which I think is appropriate and, and needed. And so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this and, um, my, it's, it's, it's an unconventional, but good solution, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. We now have two vice chairs. Very appreciative of your creative solution, Regent for Halen.
I'm more appreciative of their willingness to take on this job.
All right. Let's move on now to the presidential transition expectations. This, too, is a review and action item. In this, uh, section, we will discuss the transition issues related to President Gable's departure and to set expectations for the remainder of her tenure. At the request of board leadership, President Gable provided a memo that outlined a variety of open issues and projects in her office and across the university administration. Regent Powell and I then met with President Gable to discuss the memo. And that memo, uh, has, uh, we've provided materials to you, uh, regarding that memo. What I would like to do, uh, as we move into this topic, is I would like to suggest that we focus on a smaller subset of issues that require the board's guidance during the transition period, as outlined in the docket. And what I'd like to do then is walk through those issues and my recommendations based on the conversations and information that, uh, Regent Powell and I obtained when he was chair, and then turn to the motions and discussions. So, with that, I'm gonna start with IMPACT 2025. The last remaining deliverable, the tuition and pricing model, is scheduled to be presented by Provost Croson to the board in May. My recommendation is that President Gable, President Gable continue to consult with Provost Croson on the tuition and pricing model. So, what I'd like to do is get people's reaction, see if you agree or disagree with that, and then we'll move on to the next, uh, item. So, any, any comments about that?
Well, Madam Chair, this is a quick comment. I think it's critical. Enrollment will have a direct consequence. Enrollment is a key factor for us, both this campus as well as Crookston and Morris and those, so it's absolutely critical that, uh, involve with the provost.
Anybody else? All right. Then we're gonna move on to the next item. Uh, next is the president's recommended fiscal year 2024 operating budget. Given the timing of the legislative session, this year's operating budget will come before the Finance and Operations Committee for review at the regular June meeting and for action at a special meeting of the board in late June. My recommendation is that President Gable stays involved in the development of the operating budget and that the budget comes to the board with the president's recommendation in June, but that the president does not present the budget to the board, uh, at the, when we finally have it before us for, uh, vote. Any reaction by colleagues here to my recommendation? Yes, Regent Fairhalen?
Madam Chair, just as an overall point on all of this, this is to your recommendation that President Gable stay involved in these and then as we go through, depending on your recommendation, but if we...
Point?
An interim president? That they will then be feeding into these various recommendations as time allows, correct? Or that, I guess that will be up for discussion as to what the interim president will be doing along the way.
Yes. I mean, when we get to, if, if you looked at the position description, um, for the interim president, it contemplates that that person will begin officially on July 1 of 2023. So, our, our hope is to, in fact, select and invite to this person, uh, by May 12th. And between May 12th and July 1, presumably, this person as part of the transition will be in conversations with President Gable and others as well on a variety of items, including the budget that will be presented to us. But that, because that person will not actually be on our payroll, um, having a recommendation from them prior to July 1 isn't gonna be feasible. So, um, the thought here is she is, President Gable is very well-versed in this and all the nuances that are presented by an operating budget and that we need her continued knowledge and involvement until she actually departs. But the presumption is she is bringing onboard that interim president so as to understand that, and to the extent they have input thoughts, presumably, it's gonna be part, part of the discussion. But the reality is they can't make the recommendation until they're employed.
I appreciate that clarification, Chair Mayron, and thank you.
Any, any other reaction to this recommendation? All right. Then, uh, moving to the process then for fiscal year 2023 performance reviews and related salary adjustments for direct reports and staff in the office of the president. Performance review meetings with direct reports and staff of the office of the president would typically be scheduled for April and May. In addition to the directive that was provided to President Gable on April 12th, as noted in the DACA materials, my recommendation is that President Gable proceeds with the reviews with the following conditions. Prior to delivery of reviews to her direct reports and staff in the office of the president, President Gable will share those writ, will share all written evaluations, employee self-evaluations, and proposed salary adjustments with Vice President for Human Resources, Ken Horstman. Ken Hor, Vice President Horstman will review her recommendations before delivery to the direct reports and staff and will report to board leadership if there's anything unusual or concerning that is being recommended by President Gable. President Horstman, one of his designees, or the interim president, will attend all performance review meetings of direct reports and staff in the office of the president. That's my recommendation. Uh, any reaction to that recommendation? Yes, Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Chair Mayron. I guess I, my only reactions are that maybe just seeing a little bit more of an understanding of what unusual or concerning would mean in this context, and then, um, this is more minor, but, you know, Vice President Horstman himself being a direct report, then I'm assuming that one would be handled separately. Um, but those are my only two things. I think, I, I'm glad to see that this one was called out because I know I've had, um, former discussions about this, you know? This is, um, in particular, a standard thing to look at when an executive is transitioning and not wanting to set something up. So, those would be my only two reactions to that.
Okay. Um, so on the, let's, um, address your first, uh, reaction. Um, and if you can, I get the, uh, I understand the part about who is gonna review, her review of, of Vice President Horstman. But the first one was...
So, like, would unusual and concerning mean for, this is just an example, if, uh, if, um, I wanna use the right terminology, if pay adjustments looked abnormally high or out of scale? Would that be an example?
Yes.
Something, okay.
You know, I think this is where we would rely on the expertise of Vice President Horstman, that if he saw something that was out of the norm, the normal, uh, what he has seen in the past, something that stands out, he would bring it to our attention.
Okay.
Uh, and as far as his own review, that is a good point as to who will sit in on his review, um, and, uh, make sure that there's nothing, um, out of line with that. And, uh, to be honest, I haven't thought about that and I don't think, uh, Regent Powell thought about that either. It could be, for example, uh, someone from the leadership team that would sit in, uh, with President Gable on that, um, or perhaps, um, Vice President, um, Senior Vice President Franz could sit in on it, but he, too, is a direct report. So, I don't know, I, my initial thinking is that probably someone here from the Board of Regents would sit in on that to make sure that it was going as planned and that we have knowledge of what she said. I mean, that part of it is to carry over historically, whatever it is she's sharing and making sure that those of us who remain and the administration remains our party to the discussion. So, that's just a thought about who would sit in on Vice President Horstman's. But, uh, any other reactions? Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I, the language it talks about, you know, stuff, the April, May, um, do we have, do we have critical processes that, that can't be delayed in any way until the interim is, is onboard?
Um, so you, well, onboard meaning, is there any reason we can't wait until after July? Because that, that person won't be onboard until July 1 officially? Is that what you mean?
Um, in terms of, well, I mean, I guess that, that's a decision that, um, seems to stem from the departure of the current president. Is that how you come to the July 1?
Uh, the, right now, as I said, the position description contemplates that the interim president would begin on July 1. So, uh, that, that's what we have advertised to those out there. So, right now, we, we haven't, obviously, we don't know who it is and we haven't had a discussion about that unknown person, whether they'd be willing to start before July 1. So, that's all we've represented to the public at this time. So, my question is, if you're talking about delaying it until the interim president is onboard, I think we need to assume that person will not be onboard until July 1 unless we reach an agreement otherwise with that individual and, or, and/or President Gable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, then, my, I guess my take on this, I, I would prefer that's not the case. I would prefer that, um, much as our initial conversations when we received the, um, the, uh, notice, um, on that Monday, uh, about the transition of our current president, um, that, you know, bringing on an interim sooner than later makes sense. I mean, just, you know, as, as I pointed out, that it's different when the president is leaving the presidency and joining your faculty, um, it's, versus when your president is leaving and going to another institution. And, and while it is a light, um, competition, there is competition. All, all universities compete for students and faculty and, uh, research dollars and the like. And so, to me, once that, once that loyalty has been expressed, um, as, as making the move, we as an institution, I think, are well-served by bringing somebody on to, to step in and, and be singularly focused on this university. And so, um, my preference would be that the person, once they're identified, has an opportunity to, you know, as soon as they're able to come in and start picking things up. July is a long time away. I would agree that that's a, that's a little more to ask of these folks, but my, my preference would have been that the, that President Gable would provide input as to the performance on, on, uh, the individuals in, in this group, uh, but that the interim with, you know, the board would then be taking over the, the issue of, of compensation changes. Um, you know, there are, you know, we, examples of, of leaders leaving institutions, leaving universities, um, and making some fairly substantial, um, uh, compensation decisions related to, to folks that are either also leaving or, or remaining there. Um, at this, you know, at our own institution, we had an issue with that, uh, in previous decades. So, um, just wanna be very, very mindful of that. And, um, by no means is this, uh, you know, a, a commentary on the, the performance of the people involved, uh, but at the same time, I think that we owe it to the public that we represent, that we're very mindful of the transition and, and make sure that we're being as, as focused as we can on controlling, uh, these costs and making sure that we're not setting up a problem for the permanent president, uh, a year or so from now. Thank you.
Any reaction or response to Regent Rocha's comment? Yes, Regent for Halen?
I think those concerns are already addressed in the chair's recommendation, which include that Vice President Horstman, one of his designees, or the interim president, will attend all performance review meetings of direct reports and staff in the office of the president, and that Vice President Horstman will review before delivery, um, the self-evaluations and proposed salary adjustments. And then the chair's comment that as soon as an interim is appointed by us, that we will begin onboarding as quickly as possible. Their official position as interim president of the University of Minnesota will not begin until July 1, but that does not prevent them from being part of the layover process, for lack of a better term. That is what I'm, what I have heard and what I'm seeing in these recommendations.
Other comments and reaction? Uh, yes, Regent Kenyanya?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, um, you know, I, I understand the Regent Rocha's mindset, or, not his mindset, his concern, and I can't speak to anyone's mindset. Um, but, and maybe it's just spending a lot of time thinking about audit, um, you know, spend a lot of time thinking about those delineations. But I, you know, to Regent for Halen's point, especially those, especially the people in the president's office, I don't know who else could actually, you know, review them or speak to them. I mean, we have, we have, this recommendation has mechanisms based out of the same concerns, but at least that review, you know, I don't know if there's anyone else that could actually speak to, um, the people in the president's office, uh, office's performance. So, um, you know, if, if there's modifications to this recommendation, I think those would make sense, but, I mean, structurally, it, it does have to be the president, in my opinion.
Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Chair Mayron. One more clarification. So, I'm reading just, I'm comparing the, the board leadership direction from April 12th and then the chair recommendation. And so, the board leadership recommendation on April 12th speaks to pay adjustments, promotions or demotions, transfers, hires, or terminations. And then the chair's recommendation only speaks to, uh, written evaluations and proposed salary adjustments that would be reviewed by the chair, or by, um, Vice President Horstman. So, I just wanna make sure that those are aligned, um, for clarity purposes. So, no more will the chair, the leadership team, we'll refer to it as, 'cause we have a new structure now, um, so no more will the leadership team review all pay adjustments, promotions, demotions, transfers, hires, or terminations. The leadership team's only reviewing something if Vice President Horstman flags it. Um, and then, I, yeah, I just noticing that the language is a little different, so this is getting a little technical, but I just wanna make sure that the president and her team have all that clarity and we have that clarity as well.
Do you have the language? Is it in the board materials? Pardon?
I, I don't have it. It's in the docket.
Okay.
I'm just reading from the docket.
Yeah, and let me just get the docket.
Madam Chair, it's in italics, just above where it says chair recommendation on the last page of this item.
Number 11.
Yep, got it here. All right. So, I could tell you the background of this and, and Regent Powell can certainly weigh in as well, but when we issued the April 12, um, directive, it was to make sure that nothing was basically happening in this area until we had an opportunity to come before the board and, and, and in a robust and fulsome fashion, talk about transition issues. Um, and so, in talking with President Gable, what she identified in terms of what's left, what's on her plate right now between now and June, what's left on her plate really is only her reviews and any compensation recommendations that she would make. So, I, I think you have to put the two of them together, is my own view, um, and whether one supersedes the other, I think you gotta marry the two together because there is some overlap. But the reality is all that President Gable currently has on her plate as it relates to issues is perform, is doing the performance review, those who report to her, and making those recommendations with respect to compensation for increases on a going-forward basis. So, I, I, we're gonna have to marry the two together, um, if that answers your question.
I believe it does. Yeah, I'm just making sure from a language standpoint, you know, the, I'm just focusing on the chair's recommendation. Yeah, I would assume, 'cause it calls out, um, proposed salary adjustments separately and then it just says written evaluations, and so I presume promotions or demotions, transfers, hires, and terminations would be included with those broader categories under the chair's recommendation. That's...
I, I think that's, that's where you marry the two together, so I, my own view, and Regent Powell can speak to his own view, is to the extent that if President Gable, between now and the time she le, leaves, is about to attempt a promotion or a demotion or a transfer, a hire, a termination, it's gonna have to be reviewed. And, and we set it up right now, it would be by the chair and now it would be by the vice chairs, so that she wasn't acting independently at the time. It, it, now, on a going-forward basis, I'm willing to guess we would be consulting with Vice President Horstman about that to get his input as well, but the, the whole point of this is to make sure that she's not acting independently on employment-related matters until she departs, that there is an oversight process in place.
Okay, that, that's clear, yeah. So, it, it's not just that you're reviewing something if it's flagged, you're really act, there's a broader review. So, okay, got it, got it. Thank you.
There is. And let, let me just speak to, um, the issue I think that, that, um, Regent Rocha has raised about, maybe we should be waiting until we have a, a, a new interim president and, and that Regent, I'm sorry, President Gable should be, not be making these decisions. And I understand where you're coming from that, but to be frank, at least my own view is, in fairness to these people, they, they, her direct reports and her staff, they didn't ask for this situation, and I don't think they should be penalized from having, being, having the, um, be part of the normal course of what they are entitled to, uh, which is a review and any recommendation, and that the, really, the only person who is knowledgeable to review their performance in the past year is the president. So, waiting until we have an interim president who will have no information, uh, to do it when they come on in July 1, um, and I don't think would be very helpful to those individuals in terms of performing the review, waiting to me, it... very helpful to those individuals in terms of performing the review, waiting, to me, is not a good employment practice. So, that's why we've made the recommendation that we did. Yes, Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate those remarks. And in response to, you know, Regent Verhalen's comments, where I was looking at, I'm, there's a kind of undefined term I don't, we'll review before delivery. So, I wasn't really sure where the delivery goes. And I, by no means would I think that the, in the review process, wouldn't include President Gable, to the extent that she's in the mix, for the reasons that you just cited. I do separate that a bit from the question of the ongoing compensation question. And if, as this exchange reflects, that there is going to be active engagement of the board leadership, anytime we're talking, you know, state or tuition dollars, I'm, as you probably have observed, I'm pretty persnickety about that, to make sure that we have that relationship. So, if this is as it's being described, it seems like a reasonable approach to the matter. It struck me as a bit odd, you know, to kind of place Vice President Hortsman in this position, but it appears that, based on the description, that the resources will be available for anything that comes out of the somewhat undefined exceptional circumstances.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item or further reaction? Okay. Going then to the next item, which is the chancellor's search for the University of Minnesota at Morris. The status is, "Public interviews of the four finalists, background checks and reference checks have been completed. President Gable is ready to move forward with an offer in preparation for bringing the appointment to the board for action at the May board meeting." It's my recommendation that President Gable offer the position to her recommended candidate and bring that recommendation to the board for action at the May regular meeting. And again, just to explain the background, it's probably pretty obvious, these people are waiting, they want to know. And she, and the whole process is complete, and we will be able to weigh in if we disagree. So, that check and balance, in my view, is in place, and that's why I made the recommendation. Yes, Regent Hips?
Chair Mayor Ron, I agree with this recommendation. I think that's really important to fill that position. And we do have the final say at the May meeting, so I agree with you.
Any further reaction to this recommendation? Yes, Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, my, my one caveat on this is the same that I had in approaching the search, in, you know, going for the search in the first place, which is that, you know, the more, the University of Minnesota at Morris is a critical asset of the university. It's a very important part of our educational offerings and research, and we have an incredible faculty and staff in Morris. Going through this process, I would have liked to see us be sort of more deliberate about the future of the campus and finding a chancellor that comes in with that specific skill set to work on reversing what's been a challenging enrollment trend. Because if Morris doesn't, if we don't see improvement in that regard, I think the campus has got some real challenges in the not-so-distant future. So, you know, to the extent that I don't really have a great sense of what the specific skill set will be for, you know, and a chancellor, you know, chancellor should, you know, obviously have a long tenure in these positions. And so, I'm just expressing a bit of concern on my behalf and on behalf of whoever is sitting here, as this person is moving through the paces of the position, that it would be, you know, very helpful to have a clear understanding of what President Gable is looking for, what skill set the president is looking for, to make sure that whoever she does bring before the board is going to have a vision for the future success of the University of Minnesota at Morris. Thank you.
Any further reaction or comment? All right. Moving on to the next item, which is tribal relations. The American Indian, President Gable has indicated that the American Indian Advisory Board annual meeting with the president is scheduled for May 4, as this meeting and subsequent presentations to the board complies with the Board of Regents' policy on American Indian Advisory Boards. It's my recommendation that President Gable will attend this meeting, the annual meeting with Karen Diver, senior advisor to the president for Native American Affairs. Any reaction to this particular item? Yes, Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Chair Mayor Ron. My only reaction is, you know, I was brought comfort that senior advisor to the president, or Karen Diver, our senior advisor to the president for Native American Affairs, was attending. I say that just due to the really important nature of this work, from a short- and long-term standpoint, and the relational nature of this work as well. Also, thinking about the reports that, you know, we all received, and that's been talked about recently, the Tribal Alien Truth Project report. And so, the reason I speak to this and also maybe make this small recommendation, and be curious what other colleagues think, is I think, not only is our American Indian Advisory Boards' policy a Board of Regents' policy, the board has also been highlighted significantly in that report, which I've talked with you about, Chair Mayor Ron, and then we'll be hopefully getting to that soon, that I think it would be great if some, if a regent or subset of regents was engaged in this as well. And I would actually make that suggestion regardless of talking about it in the context of a transition. And so, that would be my only thing, is I think it's important that the president attends. I think it's great that Karen Diver is going as well, but perhaps a regent or a few regents also engage in that, just given particularly the context that we're in, but then the importance of the work, and how the board has been very, I think, publicly, and of course appropriately so, brought into this work that we'll be having more conversations about later. So, that would be my only thought on this.
All right. Thank you very much. Regent Tad Johnson?
Sorry. I didn't mean to shut my camera off there. I was trying to do something else. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I believe this is an important meeting for the tribes, and the relationship that we've built up with the 11 Native nations of Minnesota over the last couple of years has been very important. And I think this, this board passed rewrote the American Indian Advisory Board policy. And I think hearing from the Native nations is extremely important, and I hope that the meeting goes ahead as planned. And just to associate myself with what Regent Farnsworth said, if some of us are in attendance, if that's possible, I would certainly like to go. So, thank you.
All right. Any further reaction? Or reaction to Regent Farnsworth's suggestion that one or more regents also attend this meeting with President Gable and with Karen Diver? Yes, Regent Hips?
Chair Mayor Ron, I agree with Regent Farnsworth and Johnson on having some regents attend if they could.
Yes, Regent, thank you very much, Regent Hips. Regent Verhalen?
Thank you, Chair Mayor Ron. I support that, but I do think that senior advisor to the president, Karen Diver, should be consulted on that, as to who, what is appropriate, given the attendance at that meeting, who is there, what they're expecting, as far as the board inserting itself into a meeting like that.
Do you agree with that suggestion?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. And that's why I went only as far as to suggest it. Absolutely, we'd want the guidance on how to approach that in an appropriate manner. But just given, again, short- and long-term relationship building and managing transition, I think, you know, having the board present would be good, absolutely, in the appropriate manner.
All right. Any further discussions? Regent Tad Johnson, were you raising your hand or no? Okay, all right. Any further discussions on this particular item? All right, excellent suggestion, Regent Farnsworth. The next item has to do with President Gable's, what's on her calendar between now and the date of her departure, and in terms of, to give her guidance on what it is we would like her to do. And the assumption is that what we don't discuss are things that we would expect that she would not be doing, or others would be doing in lieu of her. And in that regard, we got the list from President Gable, and then I approached President Gable and asked her, with respect to those items or activities, external activities, between now and June 30, which one she believed it was important that she should attend, or that she thought was appropriate in her role as president, to attend. So, I didn't ask her, which ones didn't you think you needed to do? I said, which ones, as you look at this list, which ones would you recommend that you should, you should be present at? And I have that information for you, so I want to go through it. It follows what she has in her memo. And the idea here is, and you'll have to bear with me, is that if we disagree with her recommendation, then we'll talk about it, and if we agree it shouldn't be on her plate, then we'll take it off her plate. So, that's, the idea is to give her guidance on what she should be doing over the next several weeks. So, the first item on the memo, and you have the memo, was her April 24 Zoom meeting. It is with the Association of Public Land Grant Universities, April CEC meeting. And the C E C E, I had to make sure I remembered what that was, is the Commission on Economic and Community Engagement. So, it is a leadership meeting. She is on the chair of, she is the chair of it. So, she says that for the national organizations of the A P L U, C E C E, and Fulbright, she does those. She's representing Minnesota until her last day of Minnesota. For the C E C E, which is the Commission on Economic Community Engagement, we have the national conference that is set in Duluth in early June, and she is chairing that conference. So, she recommends that she continue in her role with that. First of all, on April 24, on, with the Zoom conference, and then also at the national conference in Duluth, which is in early June. Yes, Regent Farnsworth?
Well, I would just say, I don't know if the Zoom calls already happened today or not, but the first Zoom call would have been today, and the next item would be today as well. So, maybe we...
You were right. Yeah, I didn't realize.
Maybe we, no, I didn't, I realized it about halfway through. So, but to your point about the obligation as a whole with the conference, so just looking at that June date, then, well, I wasn't really intending to speak to that, but just making the date point, but the conference is fine with me, too.
Right. And to be honest, we'll be getting to it when we get to our June dates.
Right. So, just making the point about the first two on the memo.
I think your point is well-taken, and I didn't catch it. I don't know if she already attended it, or if she was going to do it this evening. But I did have it on there. All right. Well, I think we can probably move on from April 24, because Chip has said it, no matter what. All right. Let's look at April 26, which is on campus. It's with the foundation, the U M F Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting with U M F video message recording. And she says, although there is a call being scheduled with one donor who is focused on our S D G work that is being scheduled. So, S D G, I think, is our sustainability. We know what S D G stands for.
Sustainable Development Goals.
Thank you. Yes. I got the sustainable, and then I couldn't go out the rest.
No problem.
So, she recommends that she continue to participate with the U M F at that particular on-campus meeting, and at the call that is being scheduled with one donor who is focused on our sustainable donor, what's the G stand for, development, all right, that's being scheduled for that day as well. Any reaction to her continued involvement on the 26 on that matter? All right. Also, on April 26, at the Mall of America, as you know, we're hosting these 2026 Special Olympics U.S. Games. It is the logo reveal event for the University of Minnesota, hosting of the games. She was planning to do that particular meeting, go to that Special Olympics meeting on the 26 on behalf of the university. Any reaction or objection to that? All right. On April 27, Big Ten Conference Council, the presidents and chancellors meeting. Her intention would be to do the Big Ten Conference until an interim is named, and she indicated you can't send anyone to those meetings except the president or the interim president. So, on the assumption, we won't have an interim president by April 27, I think that's pretty clear. We won't have one by the 27. The recommendation is that she attend on behalf of the University of Minnesota. Any objection? All right. On May 1, there is the University Presidents' Roundtable 2023 Check-In, and it refers to number two, and I'm not sure what that is, other than I think it's of university presidents, and they have a roundtable, and they check in, and as long as she's the president, it's a Zoom conference. She's recommending she attend on behalf of the university. All right, no reaction there. May 8, Association of Public Land Grant Universities, May C E C Leadership Meeting, and the A P L U Commission on Economic and Community Engagement. She is the chair. Again, her intention is she does those, she represents Minnesota until her last day of Minnesota. And again, she notes that there is a conference in Duluth in early June, which we'll get to in a minute. So, she is indicating that she believes she should attend that meeting on behalf of the University of Minnesota. Any reaction? All right. Next item, May 8, also on May 8, a Zoom or at McNamara. This is the Mbold Second Quarter Executive Council Meeting. This is a meeting with the Greater Minnesota M S P Partnership, the Minneapolis-St. Paul Regional Economic Development Partnership. And she says it's the Soil and Health and Water Stewardship Champion. Her notes are indicated for the Medical Alley and Mbold and Greater M S P, we need to work with the board and the VPs to identify representatives, and then she could hand those off. So, it sounds like that is one that could be handed off, but we'd have to do it by May 8. And she'd be happy to work with board leadership and the vice presidents to identify who should attend on behalf of the university. Any reaction? All right, May 10?
Oh, Regent Hips.
Yes, I'm sorry, Regent Hips?
Is that something we could put on our next meeting agenda?
Well, May 8, our meeting, actually, are you talking about the regular meeting?
No, I'm special meeting.
A special meeting, too, and then we would do what?
Well, appoint somebody to be on that.
I don't, it depends if the board wants to weigh in, or perhaps this is something that could be worked with board leadership, with yourself and myself and Regent Cenyanya, and with vice presidents, to identify who would attend on behalf of the university until we have our interim president in place. Just a suggestion. Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Chair Mayor Ron. I guess I would just ask more of a broader question to get an understanding of the president's recommendation here. So, you had said just now, she was referencing Mbold, the, what were the, like, the three ones that you just mentioned that she would be...
This is, she says, for Medical Alley, Mbold, and Greater Minnesota M S P, we need to work, I'm just reading what her notes say, we need to work with B O R and VPs to identify representatives, and then she can hand it off.
So, I'm just trying to read through a little bit here, so it's sounding like she, the preference would be to hand those off. That's how I would hear that. And then, I would be fine with the leadership team just figuring that out personally.
Any other reaction? Okay. All right. Moving to the next item, May 10. This is a Zoom conference. She has in parentheses, attendance to be determined. This is the Minneapolis-St. Paul Regional Economic Development Partnership, Greater M S P Board of Directors Meeting. And she writes, topic focus director. She says for M B P and Greater M S P, I should do those until there's an interim for the same reasons as for the Big Ten. For Medical Alley, Mbold, Greater M S P, we need to work with the board, same thing, VPs, to identify representatives, and she can hand them off.
So, that's a handoff one?
It's a handoff on Medical Alley, Mbold, and Greater Minnesota, but for M B P, which stands for Minnesota Business Partnership and Greater M S P, I should do those until there's an interim in place, for the same reasons that she should be attending the Big Ten Conference, which is, until an interim's name, you should be the president. Ten Conference, which is until an interim's name, you should be the president. I believe that's what she's saying. Any reaction? Regent Rocha.
Stay focused on this specific issue. I, when I think about a relationship, like with the Business Partnership, where it's it's really kind of a future dynamic, I would, you know, an opportunity like that, and certainly those of you that are more familiar with the organization, correct me if they see it differently, but, you know, I would, I would be inclined to have somebody that's going to be here on a longer range basis to, to have that interaction, just because it is, I do tend to see it as being a longer-term enterprise where, as opposed to kind of a representation role, being that we're so close to that transition.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I understand that those positions are just like the Big Ten Conference, where it's the president of the university who gets those seats as a director of those, at the meetings of that, those boards of directors. And so perhaps it's a clarification for you to ask, but I would treat this one much like the Greater M S P Partnership, one that we just discussed, where if that's not the case, where it's a position dedicated to the University of Minnesota president, which then the interim president can take over, that leadership, we're the vice presidents to identify the right person. But that's how I under, understand the configuration of that item.
My understanding is she's on the Board of Directors as a result of her role as president. So I don't, so my understanding, further than the discussions that Chair Powell, or Regent Powell and I had, that that's, it's a position role as opposed to a person role. So I don't think that we can, we can verify that with her, so that I don't, unless we've got our interim president in place, that we can't send somebody else in her stead. That's not how it works. But we can verify that with her. I understand the import of what people are saying, and particularly what Regent Rocha is saying about it, given this is about a business relationship, and she's not going to be here anymore, I get that. But I'm not sure we're going to have the luxury of sending somebody else. If the choice is not sending anybody at all, and it being vacant, or sending President Gable, I'd rather be sending President Gable and continue to have a seat at the table. Any reaction? All right. May 10, it's either a Zoom or at Pillsbury Hall. It will be, it's with the University of Minnesota Foundation. It's their trustee meeting and spring reception, and she is suggesting that she would attend that on behalf of the university. Any reaction? All right. May 16 at the Minneapolis Club. It's the Minnesota Business Partnership, the Board of Directors Executive Committee. She is serving as the executive committee member. And again, she believes, as was true for the Minnesota Business Partnership and Greater Minnesota Partnership, I should do those until there's an interim for the same reasons for the Big Ten. In other words, it's, she's doing that in her, based on her position, not because she's Joan Gable. So she would attend unless we happen to have a interim president on board employed with us by May 16. Okay. May 25, Big Ten Conference Council Presidents and Chancellors Meeting and Big Ten Conference Council Presidents and Chancellors Executive Committee Meeting. Again, same recommendation, I would do the Big Ten until an interim is named, can't send anyone to those meetings except the president or the interim. So she would attend unless the interim was in place. Regent Hirsch.
Yeah, clarification on that. So if we pick an interim by then, but they're not on staff, can they go?
I think that's worth asking and getting some clarification from President Gable, whether that individual could go with her for, again, for transition sake, if that's possible. I think that would be a good thing.
I think that's really important. You know, as soon as we have that person in place to send them to these types of meetings.
Let's inquire, and if the answer is that person could attend as well in anticipation of their employment, that we, that that happened.
Yeah.
If they're willing to do it, they're free that day. All right. June 2 is the inauguration of Michael Schill, the Northwestern 17th president, which is something she wants to attend, presumably on behalf of the University of Minnesota in her capacity as president. Thoughts on that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we know what, what an event like that would cost the university?
Do not. I assume we would be picking up her travel, and I don't know if that would involve a hotel or not, or whether it's just the travel expenses, but presumably it's the travel expense, unless anybody else has any intel on that.
Just, because having participated in some of these in the past, you know, it's not uncommon to have a provost represent an institution. You know, there's, you know, open questions about people who apply for the interim position and so on and so forth, so I don't want to, you know, respond to that. But, I mean, again, it's another one of those things where the ongoing relationship with the university, to me, is somewhat relevant, especially when you talk about a peer of this situation like that.
Any other reaction to President Gable's attending on behalf of the university? Any other, I'm hearing Regent Rocha objecting. Yes, Regent Hirsch.
I, I think it's really important that we have a president at the event, whether it's the current president or the interim president, interim president, so somebody is there representing us, because it's important to them, so.
So your thinking is if the interim president is employed, it ought to be the interim president, but otherwise you are comfortable having the president attend on behalf of the university? That's what you're saying?
Yes, I think we should have somebody there, so.
Other reactions? I'm seeing a nod of a head by Regent Ruth Johnson. Any other reactions? I think that representation is important. Somebody should be there. All right. Now we get to the June 4 Duluth meeting. This is of the Association of Public Land Grant Universities, their 2024 C E C E summer meeting. She's hosting it, and she's the chair of the A P L U Commission on Economic and Community Engagement, and she is recommending that we're having the national conference in Duluth in early June. She's chairing the conference, and that she should be the one at the conference, presumably unless we have an interim and, and she's no longer representing the university. Yes, Regent Fairhailan?
I'd add to that, that if we are able to appoint an interim by that, or pick an interim by that date, and they're available on that date, that we should encourage them to attend that as well with President Gable. If nothing else, it's a really great opportunity to introduce them to the A P L U community.
Yes, Regent Farnsworth?
Thanks, Chairman Iran. This is just a quick question in response to a lot of the suggestions around timeline, and if we have an interim, and maybe this is not best practice per H R, but I don't, the only thing I noticed when I looked at the interim search website earlier today was that it didn't specifically say anything about transition, and I saw the July 1 thing, but is it worth, or is it best practice to have language there that says, we would hope that this person is available to do these things earlier? They just might know because they watched this meeting and they've applied, or do you see what I'm getting at? I'm just making a process suggestion that doesn't necessarily have to be fleshed out now, but in response to a lot of the things that I've heard, which I agree with, but that language or preference isn't necessarily reflected on the, on the interim search website. So maybe something we could look at.
Good suggestion. Any, yes, Regent Davenport, and then Regent Swigum.
Thank you, Chair. Just a friendly reminder, we have one president at a time.
Do you want to expand on your comment?
We have one president, one president through the term. So you can't have two presidents, whether they're officially in or not, something that it's part of the transition, yes, but there is only one president.
Okay, thank you. Regent Swigum?
Madam Chair, I think Regent Davenport makes a good point, and a really, really good point. I, I think we have a great president, by the way, but I feel a little inadequate with sitting here being the president's scheduler. I'm expecting that President Gable will be president, fulfilling all roles, all meetings, all duties, all responsibilities, until the day she leaves, until the last day. At least, that would be my expectation. We're sitting here going through a process of saying when she should, what she should attend, and what she should not. She should be attending everything, doing all role, all responsibility of the president until the last day. Tell me what things, we've been talking for 30 minutes about things that we've been asking her to do or fulfilling or obligations. What is she not going to do?
Well, can I answer your question?
Please. I was looking at you.
Yeah, I can see that. There is a memo that, that she, when she gave, following her giving notice of her resignation, Chair Powell at the time, and I asked her to basically go through and outline everything that was basically on her plate, or that she could be, that needed to be addressed by either the university or her during the course of, between now and her date of departure on June 30. That's the big memo that you got that outlined a variety of things, and there are many things on there that she identified in her own opinion. They are housed elsewhere, they can continue to be housed elsewhere, and she, they are not things, while in theory, everything percolates up to her, that she is not actively involved in. We then asked her to identify those in particular that she is actively involved in, which she did do. And then we asked her, I asked her to identify, of all those that you are actively involved in, which are the ones that you think you really need to be, it ought to be you and not somebody else in your stead? And that's the subset. So I didn't intend to go through the entire memo of everything that is in theory reports up to the president. But you'll see at the end here, what I'm recommending is, on these six buckets of information, yes, we're giving her the green light to go ahead, we agree, this is what you ought to be doing. And as to all the other items that we're not talking about, the recommendation is, they continue to proceed wherever they're housed. Again, the, everything is under her umbrella, but we're not expecting her to do, to specifically take them on right now, because we've identified the ones that really need her absolute personal attention. And so we're trying to ferret through that. That was the whole point of that big memo by her, and we ferreted it, we winnowed it down. And going through this was to make sure that everybody's on board, that she's going to be out there, as Regent Davenport says, we have one president, and continuing to engage in activities representing us. And I want this whole board to feel comfortable with what she's out there doing with us until she departs on June 30th, or whatever the date of departure is. I hope that answers your question.
Does not, Madam Chair.
All right.
Madam Chair, my question is, what is she not going to do that is a role and responsibility? We've been laying out things she's going to do. You haven't told me in your, to me, you didn't tell me what she's not going to do on the list. I'm expecting President Gable, with my support and the support of the Board of Regents, to be fully engaged with every event, every opportunity, every meeting, that she should be normally doing as president, representing the university until the last day she's here. If I'm wrong, I'm not a scheduler, I'm not wondering why I'm doing her scheduling for her.
Fair enough.
You know, see, you did not answer my question of what she's not going to do.
All right. I'm going to try, and then I'm going to, I see the Regent Farnsworth.
Well, my question is a little rhetorical. A little rhetorical from the standpoint of being the scheduler, you know, yeah, you can tell me what she's not going to do. I think she should be doing everything, the full role, the full scope, the full events. I don't know why she wouldn't be, but.
Appreciate what you're saying. I can tell you, her April 11th memo, what you all got, lays out everything that she sees as on her plate, either directly or indirectly. And what we've done is identify those that we expect her directly to, I am recommending that she directly continue her involvement in, and that the balance will be, just so we all know, while it all percolates up to her as the president, those items, the remaining items on the April 11th men, or memo, will not be something that she is directly involved in. So we tried to, we tried to give, put our arms around, what's it look like for the next six weeks or eight weeks? Conceptually, I agree with you that, but I think people want to know, what does that mean? What does that look like? How is she spending her day? And so that's the exercise we went through.
Good enough.
All right. I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you. Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Chairman Iran. And Regent Swigum, I certainly hear you on that, which is part of, part of the reason I wanted to zero, you know, zoom back out, ask the process question. I appreciate and respect and rely on, in the past and have moving forward, Regent Davenport's professional experience in this area, so I wanted to hear more about that, too. But, you know, I think to Regent Swigum's point, you know, there's a few nuances here. For instance, I, you know, I'm generally fine with everything on this memo that we're talking about now. I think the American Indian Advisory Board meeting, there's an argument to be made for the reasons we discussed, for an exemption to that premise. And so I, that's kind of why I'm asking the process question. I was around in a much different capacity in 2019, when President Gable was coming on, and what the president, the kind of office of the president designate was doing in that transition, I saw a little bit of that, but from a very different perspective. And so I rely on the regions who were here during that time to shed light on how that transition worked for us. And then assuming that the president, I have no idea what the president's transition responsibilities are to her incoming institution, and so I'm glad we're having this conversation. That's kind of why I, I get it's, it's ahead of where we're at, but it also, it's kind of a process question that's relevant for now. So I just wanted to explain a little bit more about that. I hear you, Regent Swigum, about these individual meetings, where I'm kind of like, sure, you know, leadership can figure out some of them, that the president herself identified, it sounds like that she wanted some transition on, but then whatever her recommendation is for the rest of them, that's why I've been generally supportive, too. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
All right, thank you.
I think Regent Powell.
Yes, Regent Powell.
Just a quick one. Thank you, thank you, Chair. First of all, just affirming Regent Davenport's comment on one at a time. Having, having said that, I think that, this is a small point, but I want to make it anyway. It has to do with, as we get further into the transition, the idea of the president accompanying the interim president, once that's possible, to different meetings and different events, for the purpose of making introductions, you know, introducing the interim president. My view, really, really positive way of affirming our process. It highlights that we have a smooth, a transition in place. It's, I think it strikes a really positive note, kind of grace note on the transition, and I'm very comfortable with that and encourage it.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving to the.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Regent Rocha.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I'm in that same, you know, position as Regent Swigum, where going through sort of item by item feels strange, doesn't feel very, you know, governance-driven, but I, you know, I come at it from somewhat of a different position. As, as we're talking about these, it's been a little challenging, you know, for me, and the assessment, and I talked a little bit about a desire to see the interim moving into the role sooner, and that, I guess I missed the July 1st on the posting, as I don't remember that being the dialogue the other day. When a, when a president, and I, and I agree with the, let's have one president. I think that, I think that can be difficult and confusing for the community. I don't think it's necessarily devastating, but it's certainly better to have, have that kind of focus. But when, when a president surprises her board with a departure, there are a lot of different ways that institutions handle it. Some of them, the person is essentially done at that moment, others, you know, have them served throughout. That, that's more common when the person is not going to a competing institution or to another institution. But I feel like we're so heavy into the cart at this point, and the horse conversation hasn't necessarily occurred. We have, you know, we have notice, we have some timing issues with, with the notice as to determining, you know, as a board, we never have had a conversation, at least that I've been privy to, about how we want to pursue the transition and the timing of the transition. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars at stake in the, in the contractual language that's in front of us, and I would, to me, it would, you know, be extremely helpful to get a perspective on what our options are as it relates to how long we want the service to continue, to the extent that we have already kind of gone through and made certain decisions, and I think, at least of late, good timely decisions about. think, at least of late, good timely decisions about the interim. I really feel like all of this should have been part of a clearer conversation by the full board as to how we want to work with the contract that's in front of us with the current president, and the timing of pronouncement, et cetera. So, to that end, Madam Chair, I move to direct the Office of the Border Regents to retain outside counsel to review the circumstances related to the president's announcement, the president's contract, and the obligations of the university. And once we have that conversation, I feel like many of these other conversations become a lot clearer.
I'm going to indulge, say, a matter of indulging, we will entertain a motion, a second in a minute. I'd like to fit, we're almost done with this list. I'd like to get through it.
Okay.
And then I'd like to actually, and then we'll ask for a second, and if there's a second, like to take a short break, restroom break, because it's almost 5:00 here, and then we will come in and discuss your motion.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to finish what we're doing here, one piece at a time. Would that be okay?
That's fine, Madam Chair.
All right. All right. So I think we were on June 21, 20 to 21. This is attending, location to be determined and attendance to be determined. This is the Association of Public Language Universities, their council, the president's summer meeting. It's a national organization, she does those and represents Minnesota, she proposes and she do that until her last day. My recommendation on that piece is, right now, she's asked that she be permitted to go on vacation, take her vacation starting June 9th. And assuming that she isn't, going to be taking her vacation starting June 9th, I would recommend that she not attend that meeting. And if that means no one's there, because our interim president hasn't started, then no one will be there at that point. To me, either President Gabel's on vacation or she's not. And so if she's going to be on vacation, she ought not to be engaged in those activities or the ones actually that are set for June 23rd. So that would be my recommendation on those two. All right. Then, my intention was to then walk, get a motion to address what we talked about on all six of these items related to transition. And then, I thought we were going to adjourn, but we do have this motion here, and so let's first see if we have a second, and then we'll go from there. So is there a second to Regent Rocha's motion?
There was a second.
All right. Then before any discussion, we're going to take a short break until 5:00. I think that gives us eight minutes to come back, and then we will discuss Regent Rocha's motion. Yes?
Regent Johnson had his hand up.
I'm sorry, Regent Johnson, I didn't see that. Regent Tad Johnson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rather than discussing this matter, the motion that Regent Rocha made, I think he's raised an interesting idea, however, I suggest we delay it, and so therefore, I move to table Regent Rocha's motion.
And there is a second to table the motion by Regent Rocha. So point of order by our Roberts rules, is there, is the motion to table a debatable motion?
Well, anything can be.
Kind of woman today.
Regent, it looks like Jason is checking.
It is not debatable, Madam Chair.
All right.
Madam, point of order, Madam Chair.
Before we do that, not debatable, do you want to explain, Regent Tad Johnson, the basis of your motion to table Regent Rocha's motion?
Yeah, I would, I just need additional information on this matter, which is legal. It's also very close to a personnel matter, and we would most likely be waiving attorney-client privilege. And I just think that at this time, it's.
Madam Chair, if it's.
Wait, wait, wait.
Point of order.
Yes.
If it's non-debatable, this sounds like a debate in favor of, or an opposition to Regent Rocha's motion, which either we're, it's non-debatable, or we're going to have an open debate and suspend the rules.
All right. I was asking for an explanation for the motion. I understand where the explanation may be viewed as debatable. It's a non-debatable motion, so we will go ahead and.
I do have a point of order question, Madam Chair.
Point of order, let's hear, what do you think is a point of order, Regent?
My point of order on the well orchestrated motion. Mr. Langworthy.
Sorry.
Mr. Lang, Mr. Langworthy. A motion to table is not a substitute for emotion, or simply defeating a motion. Is there a, what are the circumstances under which it would be laid, laid on the table until a certain time, or what is the provision for? Because it's not to be used solely as a way of preventing a vote or defeating a motion. It would have to be until, until something that would trigger it to come back. What would that be in a circumstance like this?
Yes, Mr. Langworthy?
Chair Mayron, Regent Rocha, typically, the motion to lay on the table means that the body, in this case, the board, would return to the motion later in the meeting, but to set it aside to receive advice, move on to something else. A motion to postpone, or to postpone indefinitely, would be then to, to move the motion from this, from this meeting. So I think if, if the chair could certainly ask Regent Johnson for clarification on what the intent of the motion is.
That's my understanding, that it's a postponement intent, not tabling intent, because we're leaving the meeting.
So, Regent Tad Johnson, can you clarify, are you bringing a motion to table, which would mean we would discuss it in a bit, or are you bringing?
No. I just want to correct that. I want a motion to postpone it indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely. All right. And is there a second to that motion? Second. And that is not a debatable motion? Am I correct, Mr. Langworthy?
I'm double checking.
Pardon? You're checking.
Double check.
All right. Just checking.
It is debatable, Madam Chair.
It's a debatable motion. All right. Then, with that, then, Regent Johnson, do you want to share with us the basis for this? You were starting to, and then we got into appropriate dialogue on what kind of motion this was. So, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll let others weigh in.
Yes, I know there's been a great deal written in pursuant to attorney-client privilege, and I don't think this is the type of matter that should be discussed, since it's so close to a personnel matter openly, because just, it, it's not something that is, should be subject to public, there would be a lot of information that would be flying that is, that, that, you know, is, is personnel matter, and I don't think that we want to do that. So consequently, I understand what Regent Rocha wants to do is hire a third-party attorney, and I don't know that, some of us have reviewed enough of the materials to, to make that kind of conclusion. And my understanding is this is a rather, I know we hire outside counsel, but I don't know that this is a particular point where we would like to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. Other individuals who wish to speak to the motion to postpone Regent Rocha's motion indefinitely? Yes, Regent Barnesworth?
Thank you, Chair Mayron. Lots of parliamentary procedure today. You know, my thing is just, again, speaking generally, as this Regent Tad Johnson has said, my standing, you know, all along on this issue, but then the variety of issues that accompany, accompany it, is I would just like the, you know, I'm supportive of the appropriate venue, of the board having the appropriate venue to discuss it, understanding certainly that there are some sensitivities involved. And so, you know, I am, I am, I respect only, you know, Regent, I only speak to Regent Tad Johnson, because he's the only one that's spoken yet, but I hear him on wanting to have a little bit more time to review the materials. And so I'm, I'm fine with that for today, but I do really believe that, you know, I want to have a discussion as a board about these particulars and whatever the appropriate way is to do that. And so I've been saying that for a while, and continue to support that, because I think that cleans up what I would describe as the other half of, of these outstanding transition-related issues, which, you know, I've talked to you about, Chair Mayron and whatnot. So, getting a little particular here, fine with the motion to postpone, but I do, you know, want a commitment, which I would hope we have, that the board can do some cleanup on these issues in the appropriate manner.
All right. Regent Kanyanya.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Regent Johnson, I have a question that, not quite sure who it's to, but, you know, we've gotten a bit of guidance over the years, right, on, on open meeting law, which we obviously want to respect, and I think there's been a lot of considerations of what we can't discuss privately. I guess my question then is, Regent Tad Johnson alluded to some things we can't discuss publicly, and I would, I would imagine something falls in one or the other. So if we, if we can't discuss it in this setting, I would be led to believe that that is something we could discuss in closed session. Maybe, but then again, maybe that's too logical for the, for the law in question. I don't know where I can get some clarification on that.
This may be something that, I see that the General Counsel, his office is here, General Counsel Peterson, and maybe this is something for you to come up here and try to answer the question of Regent Kanyanya.
Chair Mayron, Regent Kanyanya, let me try to respond to this while simultaneously honoring my professional responsibilities with regard to the privilege.
And this is the attorney-client privilege?
The attorney-client privilege. There are a number of legal questions that are yet to come with regard to the personnel issue you're, you're talking about, that is related to the transition. I do believe that there are a number of dimensions that are going to play out that where you need good legal advice. That's a chapter that, you know, is yet to come. And so, on this question of outside counsel, we regularly address that, and we have addressed that in a number of contexts, where we've decided that, for various reasons, there's a need for additional counsel, there's a need for sometimes independent counsel, and those are very fair questions, and all of you are ultimately the client that sort of makes that decision. But my counsel to you is that you should get information about that privileged question, and then you should decide as a board of Regents as to how to address that, and who you want sort of, you know, working that through vis-à-vis sort of the president. And you're not there yet. There have been sort of communications thus far in terms of kind of where you've been to date, but what you're talking about now is something that you're just embarking on in a conversation today about what her various responsibilities are. There are going to be further conversations on some of the contract issues that are connected with her departure from the university. Those contract issues are going to have a number of choices to them. I do think you need good legal advice for that. It's advice you have not yet received in total, and I think, you know, arm-in-arm with you, arm-in-arm with the full board, arm-in-arm with new board leadership, that's something that, you know, we should kind of think through, and ultimately, it's your decision as a client. But I strongly urge you to wait until you're well-informed before you make that choice. And we can kind of do that in whatever vein the board prefers.
Kanyanya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, General Counsel. The advice was helpful. I don't know that it got to my question, I was specifically asking about the open meeting law, and our, the question, the discussions you alluded to, our ability to have them in, you know, what venue we can, we can have those in. So, in relating to personnel matters, I'm getting the sense, and it would make sense to me, that we can't discuss some of that openly. Would I then be correct in, in understanding that then that is a situation where we can have a closed meeting?
Regent Kanyanya, there are various kind of circumstances that would kind of lead to sort of a conclusion that you'd want to make with regard to the question you've asked. As a general matter, you have the ability as a board to discuss in an open meeting what you wish. It's more just the, you know, it's, one, a constraint of the DPA in terms of private personnel data, that's a hard limitation. The privilege issue is a choice you have, but just know that the privilege is one of those privileges where, once you waive it in part, you waive it in its entirety. And so, you have the ability as a board to make a board decision to waive the privilege in whole or in part. But once you make that decision as to one aspect of a subject matter, you're waiving it as to the entire matter, anything that's sort of covered by that privilege. So, yes, you do have the ability to speak to open, speak to privileged issues in an open meeting, but you just need to appreciate the privilege, the waiver of the privilege implications of doing that. And that's where I'm, I say, in order for you to be sort of an informed client, you need more legal advice about all of that, and it has to be matched up with factual context in terms of how you'd like to step and when you'd like to step. And you haven't received that yet.
Final indulgence?
Yep, yep.
So I, are we, and I understand it's maybe nuanced or complicated, but are we able to have this discussion in a closed setting?
I mean, as a, as a general matter, the, as to attorney-client privilege matters, the only area in which you can have a closed meeting is if there's litigation or threatened litigation. You don't have the ability to have a closed meeting to just discuss privileged issues. That's what your question is.
And, and from the employer-personnel perspective?
Regent Kanyanya, you know, with regard to, you know, President Gabel, your policy set up a Presidential Performance Review Committee, and the way in which that committee proceeds to handle a number of these issues will need to be handled in a way that comports with the DPA and all of the private personnel data issues that surround it. And the, the sort of handling of those matters by the PPR is something that we've navigated before, and will need to navigate again, once you determine sort of the makeup of the PPR. And so it would be good for that PPR group to get advice on the very question you just asked.
Thanks.
It's complicated. Suffice it to say. Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Chair Mayron. So with respect to the motion in front of us to postpone indefinitely, I would speak against the motion with, in response to Regent Johnson's statement for, basis for the motion. for basis for the motion. This motion is not at all asking for an opportunity to talk about a personnel matter in a public setting. That's not, the motion is simply to empower the board with legal advice. I know that the General Counsel made two comments that I would like to highlight. One is he referenced advice that we have not yet received. And then the second comment was that he, you know, urges us to be at a position where we are well informed. In my opinion, being well informed requires legal counsel, requires legal advice. And we are now several weeks into this transitional environment and have not actually had the conversation that virtually any client I've ever had in a departure would have sought immediately upon notice that a key person is going to be leaving. And that is, what are the implications under the contract? What do we want to do moving forward? How do we address this? What are the cost implications of decisions that we make? And one of the challenges that I have raised in the past also is that, you know, our General Counsel and our team does a remarkably wide range of things for this institution. It's a very, very important part of what we do, but they also work directly with the President. In fact, in citing, reviewing case law, where the President is a named party, the General Counsel represents the President. And so, I don't want to put the General Counsel in a position, whether, you know, in rules of conflict, but in the comparative interests of the President and the board in having a conversation about how we want to proceed in the best interest for the university. And so, as General Counsel mentioned, we bring in outside counsel very frequently on matters, and this is a very clean opportunity for us to do that. And so, to the extent that we have a public that we represent, and to the extent that we have some high-profile issues that will be coming before us, I think that we are well advised at this moment. In fact, I would love to turn the clock back a couple of weeks, but we can't do that, obviously. But I would like this board to be empowered with competent outside employment defense counsel to take a look at our arrangement at this point and give us advice on what options we have. And if counsel comes back and determines that we are, you know, heading in a specific course, then we are none the worse for wear. In fact, we have the strength of that representation on our side for things moving forward. So, I would ask that you oppose the motion and approve the original motion.
Regent Verhaelen? Reminding everyone, the motion currently is a motion to postpone the original motion, which was to direct the Office of the Board of Regents to retain outside counsel. This motion is a motion to postpone that motion indefinitely.
Chairman Mayron, in order to meaningfully respond to several of the comments that have been made, I would be veering very close to the attorney-client privilege in order to meaningfully respond to some of them, and I'm not comfortable doing that. I would really respectfully request that we call the question on this, on Regent Johnson's motion.
All right. With a request to call the question, procedurally, does that, do I act on that at this point?
Not debatable.
Yes, not debatable. All right. We're going to call the question. All those in favor of postponing the-
No, no, Madam Chair, it's ending debate, is calling the question.
Pardon?
You first vote to end the debate, and then you vote on the motion.
I'm being educated right and left. All right. So, first, so the first item is to end the debate. Is that what it-
If Regent Verhaelen's comment is to be taken as a motion, and Regent Ruth Johnson's second is to be taken as a second by you as chair, then the appropriate next step is to vote to end debate.
All right.
And then you go to the motion that's on the table.
Thank you very much.
On the floor, that's right.
All right. Let me clarify, Regent Verhaelen, was that a motion to call the question?
Sure.
All right. And Regent Ruth Johnson, was that a second?
Yes, it was.
All right. All those in favor of calling the question and ending debate, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have three noes, and the motion carries. The next motion is the motion to indefinitely postpone the motion by Regent Rocha. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone that motion?
Madam Chair, may I request a roll call, please?
We will do a roll call. So, doing a roll call, go ahead, Executive Director Seuss.
On the motion to indefinitely postpone the Rocha motion, Regent Davenport?
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth?
No.
Regent Farnsworth votes no. Regent Hipsh?
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Ruth Johnson votes yes. Regent Tad Johnson?
Yes.
Tad Johnson votes yes. Regent Kanyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kanyanya votes yes. Regent Powell?
Yes.
Regent Powell votes yes. Regent Rocha?
No.
Regent Rocha votes no. Regent Swigum?
No.
Regent Swigum votes no. Regent Talirabe?
Yes.
Regent Talirabe votes yes. Regent Verhaelen?
Yes.
Regent Verhaelen votes yes. Chairman Mayron?
Yes.
Chairman Mayron votes yes.
The motion carries nine to three, and the motion, Regent Rocha's motion, is postponed indefinitely. We're going to take a short restroom break now, and we will come back at 5:25. Thank you very much. We are back at the special meeting. Before we entertained the motion made by Regent Rocha, we had gone through six items where, to get your sense of whether President Gable should be engaging in the activities that I recommended that she be engaged in. And the balance of that was that I was further recommending that the remaining open issues and projects, which she identified on her April 11 memo, either continue to advance elsewhere in the administration or shift from President Gable to where they are usually housed within the administration. So, with that, I would like to consider the six recommendations that I made to you as a single action, as we do with the consent report. First, I will see if anyone would like to separate out an item to be considered before I invite a motion to approve the recommendations as I have presented them to you. Does anybody wish to separate out any of the six items of recommendation? Yes, Regent Farnsworth?
Chairman Mayron, more procedurally, just to be clear, we're accepting the recommendations as you presented them with some of the amendments, informal amendments that we made during the conversation.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Yes, Regent Talirabe? Oh, you were just-
That was just me.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the recommendations as outlined in the docket materials?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the recommendations? All those in favor of aye, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. And with that, if there is no further discussion, this matter and this meeting is adjourned.